We are Schlitz, Haddes. And first and foremost, I'd like to invite Ms. Gina Delamay for the presentation. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the way, I always have an appreciation. Some brothers, when I met with some, actually I met with two days ago. And support? You're not working.
Brother?
Yes. We had a meeting on few issues and some brother, the idea of having a town hall meeting. And I kind of liked that idea. And now here we are at, in our first town hall meeting. Please give Ramon a clap. That's my word now. It's been great and he's been so supportive and I appreciate him. And not having this guy to say. What we're gonna present, Mike, like I said, you've received information about the broader picture as far as the charter school that is happening this day. And this information, a lot of information are sold to the mayor. For example, the very first item is part 2018 result. The state department has not officially released the result. Every school received a wrong result. And some schools, that school just share this information with their own community. And I have to dig in to the documents from some township where they backed up the PUC results. So that part of this presentation, once the state releases all information of PUC results for all schools and school districts, explanation. We're gonna do more analysis and share it with the community. And they aggregated, disseminated data, all that subgroups, economically disadvantaged subgroups and racial information and all that. So this is so preliminary, but this is what we have available to us as a state. So that's the first and then we'll talk about some updates about changes in the assessment state. Assessment state canceled after PUC assessments. And we'll talk about it and we'll talk about what's coming up next. Now we're gonna talk about building methods because it's very important. I get questions from parents, you know, time to time about how much we're paying with the cost compared to other charter schools in New Jersey. Well, I'll show you that analysis. And then I'll have some announcements. And the first and foremost charter renewal, that's coming up next year. We have 364 days to submit our charter renewal application. This is to October 15, 2019. Today is October 16th, so we have 364 days. We will discuss playground, library project and we're gonna close the upcoming year also. So my goal by November is to finish. So 27, I'm done by either platform. If you have any questions, please ask. I'll be announced there for your further questions. There's two women in mathematics. And the first one, I'm trying to tell this map, but the order is the first one is grade A. And the second one is state average. And the last one is S. They say in math night is grade three, which is out of 2001 series. Remember, we had, we had our first third graders, but I still take test as well. And the level of percentage of level four and five is 83.3. Just for your information in PUC assessments, there are five levels. Level one, two, three, sales, level four and level five, level course proficient, level five is exceeding expectations. So these are the percentages of level four and five together for Frankton, for state and for us. That's grade three, 83.3, significantly higher than Frankton and state. By the way, this information again, the Frankton results are on the township's website. And that's why I did the thing for this. Grade six, where it exists before, this number 427. And Frankton that's 827. And so we have two other districts, not Frankton and New Frankton now. And so I see not like any information on there. So that's why I have Frankton home. But like I said, in the state with this information, we're gonna share it with students. Grade seven, grade eight, this is the highest. Is that was elementary or is a high school grade? Algebra one, grade eight, 1.1%. One percent functions at 35.7%. Algebra, geometry. In fact, in high school, it's kind of, it's not in the same order as algebraic because algebra, one, geometry, then algebra two. There is a drop across the board at this school, at the state, at the district. The, I guess, the most legit explanation of the drop. What I mean by the drop is algebra two, algebra one for us is at 81.1%. And then for geometry, which is the course after algebra, and it's 68%. And algebra two, which is the last one, where 44% and Frankton Township is at 25%. There's a drop across the board at all schools, all districts. It's very typical. The reason why there's a drop is because students who pass algebra one exam or geometry, they need the graduation requirement. They don't care about the perfect exam anymore for algebra two. That's how it is. If you pass algebra one, you don't care about geometry and algebra two. If you don't pass algebra and not pass geometry, then you don't care about algebra. You take out English, language, child plus 11 graders. Most of them, almost all of them met the graduation requirement before they were done with the testing. So that's how it works. There is no consequences from the state department, no consequences from the school for passing and not passing. This is basically an information for the school, not about the school, not about the students. So that's us for mathematics. In each standard class, grade three, beginning with our first year, but 83.3% of our students met this. It's exceeded this standard, significantly higher from the state and the township across the board at elementary and middle school level. And it's the same idea again, you see the drop, grade nine, year 10 and 11. While the after from the school, in Frankton Township, there is a drop across the board. We're so proud of our students and parents, of course. Any question about the test results? Like I said, this is so preliminary, I don't know when the state is going to release the information of the data about 2018 administration. Since they tested that, I don't even know if they're going to release it honestly. But I checked the website today again, it was not yet. Let's move on. School funding is certainly an outrage, briefly discussed. In reality, even though the charter school requires that the charter schools receive 90% of funding of what it is for the traditional, for students attending traditional public schools, in reality, it doesn't play out that way. The school receives a lot of additional grants and payments from the state department, federal department. This is what there is on the county interest payers, like educational spending. The website is right here and I'm going to share this slide with you. When you, when you go to the website and you click on the link, you'll see all the, all the data as far as the budgets and the 13 place management. Briefly, in 2016, 17, the average money we spend per child is $40,758. Where it was $22,980, almost $23,000 for S students attended or attended the Frankton Township public schools. The difference is $8,000. And it's pretty much the same ratio, 73%. That's, that's the reality. So considering that we have about 820 students in all that this school, 800 times 8,000 is about more than $6 million. If we were at, if we were a traditional public school, our funding would add in $6 million more than what we're gonna be receiving this year. There's a, there's a huge gap. Plus, not only, we're gonna talk about that, not only we're receiving less funding, we're paying for the building. The rent for this building is $1.2 million every year. On top of $6 million that is. And this is, they don't pay for their building. In fact, they get capital upgrade money, additional money from the state department. We're in a huge disadvantage. In return, in exchange, we have to do more with wages. We have to alter from this way. The schools surround us, so that our charter is renewed. So there's a huge unfairness, but I hope it's gonna get corrected. And that our battle moving forward, like Harry said, Altris said, is to save each other's school. It's so unfortunate. Instead of making improvements and corrections, we're gonna fight for saving our schools. And we're gonna accomplish it all together. If we're not united, if we don't fall, if we don't fight for the same path, I think we're gonna fail. Please help us accomplish this goal and go save our schools. And if you're from North Branch, can you bring it? If North Branch is the lowest among the traditional public school districts, that's where things is different from. But even, even that district is, is pretty much 20 or 30% higher than, or 20% higher than us. That's what we get. This data is available on the state's website. When you go to the state department, I'll show it here at the end. And there's a data session, click on it and then click on, and you just can see a strategy, education spending. You'll see all these, all these numbers over there. Let's talk about school testee costs. How it looks like. This is from federal Department of Education's website. They prepare the report for each and every state. And this is from New Jersey report. You know, in the charter schools, the charter schools are upgraded, about non-traditional public schools that are run by independent board of trustees. They have to take care, take care of their own building issues. There are different ways of taking care of the building matters. If the district is not hostile, they can share their facilities. And I'm seeing examples across the state. Or you can find a realtor. They can buy a building, renovate it for you and they can rent it. It's the case at this school. Or you can own a building. If you're board of trustees or if you have a lot of donors that donate money, you can buy your own building. So if, if numbers, if you own your own facility, the data is from 2013, I agree. It's not fair to me, but I think it's pretty similar to this big now. And the cost, this is the cost per student, if you own your own facility, over $1,600. Every year, $1,600 out of the funding that the district for charter goes to a facility. And I guess the case to, is what we have here. The average cost per child is $1,400. You pay rent to the number, that's how it is. And if you rent a space from traditional public school, that is the cheapest. It's under $1,000, $932,000 in nature. As far as the percentage of overall operating budget, we're supposedly close to 10.60. This is us. Basically, the average percentage of facility cost compared to the overall operating budget is supposed to be 10.60%. So that's what it is supposed to be like. Let's just take our case, what's happening here. And I made a comparison. I've been approached by several parents. And, you know, in the past few years, we've been growing drastically and we're gonna continue to grow drastically. And I'll show you the enrollment projections in my slide. And when there is a growth, typically, there is an impression that we're compromising the problem. We're gonna take a look at that too, which is not the case. But it brings a lot of advantages, we'll talk about that. These numbers for the last three years in our current charter store. Well, what was that true to run this school, renew the charter in 2015? And for 2017, it is school year, the school had 520 students. And then I had 48 more and then 48 more for the last year. Eventually, 624 students. As you all know, this is my third year in the school. The very first thing that I did, I was hired on August 11th. And the deadline was October 13th. The very first thing that I did, that I did was to amend the charter. Because the contract was signed with the landlord. And the rent was $1.2 million, was huge. And, and, and we had 472 students that first year during 2016, 17 school year. It was with 528 students. The percentage of, the cost of facility, spite of percentage was over 70%. Let's go back to the previous slide, what is supposed to be 10.60? It was way higher. When you, when you have to spend more for your facility, then what do you have to do to survive? You compromise the resources that you make available to your students. Let's go there. Anyways, I amended the charter. When we amended the charter, instead of 48 students for grades, I went for post 96. And that was the year that we became global. We had a lot of credits with the state department and I took that down to 10. And the state approved it. Not only they approved it, I would take it, they also approved that satellite campus in New Brunswick under 16. So the new numbers are here. And this, last year we had 624 students and this year we have 816 students. I may enroll a few more to make sure that we get some funding, you take that, you will still have to run this school. And these numbers are the cost of the property, cost of the facility per student. This year we are at 1470. For every child, we're paying 14, 1,400, $100 to the landlord. That's the cost of the property. And we are at about 16%. And what was its cost and what was the overall average for the state? Then 5.6. We're getting closer to that. Last year it was 15.08%. And next year, it's gonna be under 10%. We're at an advantage. When we are at an advantage, then we're gonna be able to present more opportunities for our students. We'll talk about it. So this, based on case one, without expansion, the cost of the facility for this year would add in $2,083. But in actual, it's $1,470. What's the difference? $613. We're paying less, $613 less this year than what we're adding in without expansion. So with $613, what can you buy? Let's take a look at that. And by the way, these are actual numbers from our operating budgets. Can buy Chromebook. And electronic textbooks across the subject areas, all textbook, electronic for all subject areas, subject area. And print book. And all other electronic resources. The additional assessments, the curriculum resources, you may. And the cost of all of these resources, the average cost per child is $508. So that does not make sense to everybody, why we have to grow by enrollment. As far as compromising or the assumption or misconception of compromising equality, you just saw the test results. We're still outperforming Frankton Township. I'm sure we're outperforming North Branch and New Branch. And research, I looked up the research, let's see what it says. And by the way, as far as, when you go to Google Scholar, it's open public. And when you, when you do, or when you search school sites for high schools, this comes up. And there is a lot of new or recent research about the school site. This is one of the most recent one. Yeah, it's 1997. Suggests that the ideal high school defined in terms of effectiveness, including student nature, learning, enrolled between 600 and 900 students. If school smaller than the students don't last, we are wasteful. So even this topic promotes growth for high school. May not be the case for this line of management, but this is, is in the case by experiences that are now discussed. Those in large high schools, they're special over 2,100, which is the size in the Frankton High School, I think. Am I correct, Sam? Sorry. Learn considerable less. Learning is more equitable in very small schools with equity defined by the relationship between learning and student socioeconomic background. That's what this study says and most recent. There are a few other studies that there are that I was able to find. They're suggesting a similar result. So it says, especially in the high school, you have to grow. Why do you have to grow? There are reasons. Here it is. It brings you financial stability. Forget about financial, it's the business for the administration. But when you have more students, you can only, you can offer more interclass. You can offer more elective classes. You can offer better athletics offering, athletics program, music program. And when you have financial stability, which is discussed, you can hire more teachers. You can use your student-teacher ratio. That's how it is. I don't suggest to grow drastically in an uncontrolled way. But I think ideal, and there are my, my first principle ship for the national school in Georgia. And ideal, that I think we have to have at least 400, 500 students to offer full-blown, well-rounded curriculum and opportunities for students. That's what I want to accomplish in this school. When we accomplish our full enrollment, we're gonna have about 400 kids at the school. And I hope one day we can also ask for the New Branch teachers over there. We'll have another 300 kids in the area. So all together, we're gonna be around 700. Even though the classes will not be mixed, maybe we can, we'll have opportunities to mix students in music, art, music programs, athletics programs, type of stuff. Because that school will be under the same charter as what I say to the part of the school. So that's what we're looking at. So growing, unless you compromise the quality, which enough it is in our school, growing is healthy. It brings a lot of more resources to the school that's doing. And if they call it economic scale, there is an interesting dynamic there. I'm gonna look it up to you, but it's important to know. Student-teacher ratio, again, a lot of research supports the idea of improving what's happening in the class. And we wanted to make sure that we provide sufficient support for all students in the classroom. This is the trend that you're seeing as far as the student-teacher ratios is on. Three years ago, our student-teacher ratio is 10.8. For every 10.8 students, we had a teacher in the class. And it's been going down, which is a good thing. And this year, we're at 9.5%. And I think it's gonna be under 9% this year. As we have more resources, as a result of increased funding, which is a result of increased enrollment, we're gonna be able to provide more resources for our students, which is awesome. And the New Jersey data just 12.1. Frankton averages in high terms, less than 10. Charter renewal, it's a complicated mess, but I'll just briefly go over the numbers, I know it's already delayed. And 748. Our charter term is going to expire at the end of 2020 school year. And based on the approved enrollment, approved numbers, we'll have 960 students in this school, 96. 960. And as you all know, like I said, we proposed them and it was approved by the state to have 96 students in every grade level. In order to have a healthy draw in that, it's gonna be a huge battle. Now the administration is definitely, this renewal was two years ago. I felt very comfortable, even going for 1,500 students. But I don't think we can accomplish it. We've got to do more reasonable. And we're not able to justify why we want what we want. That's 1,248 students. And if it is not approved, let me give you the story, what's gonna happen. It's period people. My fourth grader, they're 21, 21, 20, 20, 21, 21 school year. And then when they move into the fifth grade, fifth grade, we'll have 24 students. We'll have to draw a lottery among those 96 students to identify who's gonna be in the fifth grade at this school. It's, it will be the case right here. From eighth grade to ninth grade, we'll have to tell 24 students to go back to the public schools. From eighth grade to, from ninth grade to 10th grade, another 24. If it's not approved, that's why we have to fight all together for our kids. And don't think that it's gonna impact fourth graders only. It's gonna impact even middle graders. In three years, they'll be right here. And then when they come to, when they hit fifth grade, then they'll have to leave this school. This is the enrollment projection. I made a lot for you and I'm gonna share it. I know Michelle is gonna put it on the website. And so this is the enrollment projection we're gonna have to fight for. And we have to accomplish it together. And it's going to impact pretty much everyone in this field, everyone in, in this school. Eventually, if it's, if the growth is not approved, we'll have to draw lottery from our current students to identify who's gonna stay, who's down. Yes, sir.
So this is the campus here or this is?
It's just here.
Just here.
It doesn't include New Branch for any of this.
Yes. Since we're going to renew next year, is this the plan you're gonna propose?
Yes, this is exactly, these are numbers I'm gonna put in the application. It's not gonna change. That's how it is. That's how we, how we structured it two years ago when we amended our petition. Is there any question about this? Yes, we.
This could be in New Branch school, what is happening, is supposed to open?
It was supposed to be open last year. We had a building and I told you the story during the lottery. We signed a contract with the family, the building, the city.
Holy Parish.
Holy Parish building. They have a beautiful school building. We were going to be in that building, send the contract. Unfortunately, the school district took that away from us. They, they went to the diocesan, by passing the church leadership, offered more money and they done it. And in that building, there are 11 classroom spaces and the district is using only three. I spoke with the leadership. They're underutilizing and completely just to keep our building open. Anyways, but we're trying again this year.
Okay. What grade is that, grade 11?
It's, it's gonna be middle and high. Seven to students each grade. If they find a building. So let's move on. So this was the politics to speak to our kids. We're gonna have a lot of, a lot of meetings with our parents. By the way, two years ago, when we applied for enrollment, if you were with us, then we collected a lot of letters from the parents. I submitted 320 letters to the DOE. And since the DOE, Department of Education approved our expansion, Frankton Township sued the Department of Education. And it's been litigated. And the Department of Education submitted the letters from the parents, what that is, to the court system to demonstrate the demand and the support from the community. It is very important, when it's time, every parent, every grandparent, every neighbor, they have to write letters. We're gonna go speak to the board of, the state board of education. We're gonna try to speak with the commissioner and everybody. It's, it's gonna be a big fight. And even after approval, my normal litigation will come, not against us. It's only a challenge. We had challenged not only for time, for school term, we had the same bill that we.
We have a question over there.
I'll take the questions at the end, that's okay. And the cost is gonna be the same, but we have to, then in that case, it's gonna create financial challenges. When there's a financial challenge, then we have to compromise the resources. We don't have any other way than fighting. That's okay. And it's so simple, we're gonna fight. We have good fighters in New Brunswick, I know that. We have to accomplish it together. I'll take the questions at the end. So let's move on. Third project, I shared this slide with you, but the playground idea has been a hot topic since the beginning of the school year, in fact, since last spring. And I'm just gonna present, we came up with four options based on the student numbers and all that. I'm just gonna protect the one that we are pursuing now, since it's already late. And this, I mean, next week, another state contractor is coming and they're going to look at the area, they're going to give us a call. This is a preliminary call. And I think in two weeks, we'll have at least two calls from two different companies, so that we know what we're gonna be doing. So based on the preliminary call for a state contractor, fifty-five percent of the total cost will go to the group. Forty-five percent will be safety service. They're going to treat the land. And it's kinda hard to see, but it's worth projecting to put it in the area as you pull it right by the parking lot. The rather considerations can change, but that's what it is now. So the capacity is going to be two hundred eight, because we'll have ninety-six students at each grade level. So wanna have two grade levels playing at the playground at the same time. So the capacity has to be around two hundred at least. And these are the pictures. And drawing. And the cost is about, what was the cost? I think it was about one hundred, the price is one hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. That's just an estimate. And I reviewed the budget, allocation budget to the business department this past week. And I think, I'm not, I don't call me on this, we're gonna receive our final budget from the state department in early December. And if we unspend, if we get the budget we unspend, we're gonna, the school is gonna be able to allocate up to eighty thousand dollars for this project. So the rest, we're gonna accomplish it all together. Option two, if we can allocate eighty thousand dollars, if we don't get enough support from our parents, which I love, is gonna be the case. And then we'll have to wait until next year to save more money from the operation. So it's gonna be a little process. We wanna have a playground by the beginning of next school year, so we have to work together. That's another area of collaboration between the school and the parents. And announcements next morning, October thirty-first. If you don't know, the pattern is every, I mean, I think last Monday or every month, we start at six thirty. Sometimes there are changes, we try to give it as much notice as possible. And our board members, they're volunteers, they travel for the professional responsibilities and all that. And in a case where we don't have a corps, then in that case, we're scheduled to be. And in fact, it was the case. And the board is going to make the schedule for this entire school year, this coming meeting. And we're gonna post everything on the website. And board meeting minutes, everything, it should know the website. And future conference day, October twenty-fifth. And I would kind of ask, can I? Okay. And the, I kind of ask you not to schedule a conference if your child is stay at school. Let's try to make it more efficient, let's try to give opportunities to the parents whose children are struggling. They need, they need to meet with the teachers. And when we open slots, third class slots for each teacher, it's going to be a long day for teachers. But let's prioritize it for favorite parents whose children are struggling. That being said, you're always welcome to schedule conferences outside the state. Always, just shoot an email to the teacher administrator, we're gonna try others to accommodate your requests on us. But if your child is stay at school, please be mindful of other parents whose children are not stay at school. So parent breakfast, we have two more to go. One of them is coming up, it's Thursday, and the last one is coming up. First, we're gonna add more dates. And I know some of you joined us for breakfast, a great platform, open platform for discussions. I mean, it's awesome. You'll get, I mean, it's a very safe environment to ask questions about the school, about your child's case. And following the breakfast, I know parents, they meet with administrators, assistant principals, and P M's and all that. So to try to take advantage of it, more dates will be published. You'll receive an email, please sign off if you're interested. We want you to be involved in that area. I guess that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much for listening.